Ninhamza, San Juan, Chip Rock chapters. Ado, um, Natneje, Ulta, uh, Eiyei, Toriyon, Day School. All four members would be from Toriyon chapter. Mariano Lake, uh, four members, two from Pine Dale, two at large between Mariano Lake and Smith Lake. Uh, Ado, Oho, uh, Oho and Sino, Day School, four board members, three from Oho, one from Toriyon. Pueblo Pantado Community School, four board members, two from Pueblo Pantado, one at large with White Horse and Nagizi, and one from Toriyon. Uh, Toajale, Alamo, uh, Leave As Is, all their five members are from their particular communities. Uh, number fourteen, Baca, uh, Ado, Gloyaje Committee School, I'm sorry. Eiyei would have, uh, four members, three from Baca, and one at large for Casmera Lake and Theru chapters. Ado, Tisosbus, I'm sorry. I'm in the community where I shouldn't be saying Tisosbus. Tis, oh, hey, Tisosbus, that's Community School. Two at large were Crown Point, Nahavishki, Casmera Lake, one at large with, uh, Vicente, Tseiei, one at large with Little Water and White Horse Lake. Ado, Combined, Fort Wingate, altogether, five board members, one at large for Checheltra, Bahalen, uh, Tsetechi, uh, Melito, Tseato. Church Rock would have a rep, uh, as well as, uh, Ayambato, one at large between, uh, Pine Dale, Mariano Lake, one at large for Smith Lake, Theru, Baca, uh, Smith Lake, Navaca. So anyways, uh, Eiyei. So that's, uh, five members. Okay. Ado, Rema, again, uh, as is, with five members. Uh, Ela, uh, the school of Plan, okay. So this is where the, I, I, I personally got confused myself. Uh, so we're at Eastern, Plan Four, um, right after what I just covered, yeah. There's another, there's another one. This is the, uh, this is the combined version of Plan Four. So you have a Plan Four A, which is, uh, separate schools as they are. Ado, Plan B is combining certain, certain schools with, uh, oversight by, by combined boards, actually. So number one, you have, uh, will have a combined oversight of five board members for Lake Valley, um, uh, Tseiei and, uh, Tisos, uh, Community School. Tisosbota, Community School. So you have five members, one from Lake Valley, one at large for Tseiei, Cahili Canyon, one from Little Water, one from Vicente, one from Crown Point. Ado, Hinanaatnil, uh, Sahadnatlilo, uh, Zatlano Dili would have four board members, two from Herfno, two from the, uh, Nagizi. Uh, Brett Springs, uh, combined with Checheltra, uh, would have four board members. Brett Springs would have one, Checheltra would have two, Red Rock would have, have one. Uh, Debejajahatjin with, uh, Gloyaje, uh, combined, you have, uh, two from Baca, Prue, two, one each from Casmera Lake, Little Water, and, uh, Theru. Ado, number five, uh, by itself, Toriyon, uh, Day School, all four members would be from that community. Uh, Mariano Lake, by itself, uh, two from Pine Dale, uh, one at, one at large between Mariano Lake and Smith Lake. Ado, Hinanaatnil, number seven, is Oho and Sino, Pueblo Pantado, uh, with two members from Pueblo Pantado, two from, uh, Oho, and one from, uh, Toriyon. Toajale, as is, uh, five members, uh, is kept in place, so is, uh, Alamo. Fort Wingate, uh, is already combined, uh, with the same membership as, uh, the, the A Plan. Uh, and number eleven, with Rema, remains at five, too. So, so instead of having seventeen boards, this drops to eleven. That's what this is saying, right? So, 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 so you have four A, four B to consider. Um, five, again, Plan Five, but, uh, no, that, it's broken into two, it's two subparts, no, no. Um. So the Plan, the difference between Plan Four and Plan Five, yeah. Plan Four, again, remains as what you're familiar with, which has got four members or five members. Plan Five, again, it'll have members of, uh, three, four, or five board members. So, so that's the difference between four and five. In terms of combinations for subparts B, I believe it stays the same. Um, but let's go ahead and go through the one for, uh, Part Eight, don't let you get. Uh, which involves the seventeen schools, um, Lake Valley would have three members, two from, uh, Lake Valley, one from White Ho, White Rock. Hanatlin, Community School, uh, three members, all three would be, be from Herfno. Uh, Brett Springs Day School, three members, three from, uh, two from Brett Springs, one from, uh, Red Rock. Uh, Tseiei would have three members, two at large between Tseiei and Cahili Canyon, one at large between, uh, Crown Point and, uh, Nahavishki. Ado, number five, Checheltra, uh, School would have three members, two from Checheltra, one from Melito. Uh, Debejajahatjin, one at large with, between Casmera Lake and Baca, one at large with, uh, Pine Dale, Mariano Lake, Smith Lake, and one from, uh, Little Water. Zatlano Dili Community School, three members, two from Nagizi, one at large between Herfno, Consular, Ninhamza, and Chip Rock. Ado, Natneje, uh, Day School, uh, three members, all three would be from that community. Mariano Lake, uh, Community School, three board members, two from Pine Dale, one at large between Mariano Lake and Smith Lake. Ado, Oho, Day School, with three member board, two from, uh, uh, Oho, and one at large, one at large. Oh, it's Toriyon by itself, don't know. So that's number ten, Oho Days, Oho Sino Day School. Number eleven, Pueblo Pantado Community School, two from Pueblo Pantado, one at large with, uh, White Horse Lake and Nagizi, Toriyon chapters. Uh, Toajale, number, uh, four, uh, members, uh, board size of five remains the same, all five members from that community as well as Alamo. Five board members, five, all five from Alamo. Uh, Baca and Gloyaje Community School, four board members, uh, three from Baca, Prue, and one for, one at large, uh, between Casmera Lake, Smith Lake, and Theru chapters. Ado, on to number fifteen, uh, Tisosbota, Community School, two at large between Crown Point, Nahavishki, one at large with Vicente, Tseiei, uh, and then one at large for Casmera Lake, Little Water, White Horse chapters. Uh, number sixteen, uh, Fort Wingate, uh, one at large for Checheltra, Bahalen, uh, Tsetechi, uh, Melito, and Tseato chapters. Uh, one member each for Church Rock, Ayambato, one at large between, uh, Pine Dale and Mariano Lake, one at large for Smith Lake, Theru, uh, Baca, and then Smith Lake chapters. And then number seventeen, Rema, with five members, and all five members should be from their, uh, three, don't get, that's five. So, what's Ela? Uh, I'm not gonna go too much into the detail of this counterpart for the, for the reduced, for the reduced part, again. Eiyei, so again, the same plan, where it's combining boards, but for their, their individual size, and it goes from, uh, seventeen boards to eleven boards. So similar to what we discussed, uh, in Plan Four. Uh, so five, but it's, the number of seats is different for this one, it's, uh, uh, three, four, five. Ado, number six, uh, Plan Six, uh, is, uh, at the, towards the, towards the end here. Um, basically, what Plan Six does is, it does an average of two boards per agency. So what it, what it's doing here is that, uh, you have, except for Eastern, it's quite different for the other four agencies, it's definitely just two boards per, per agency. Each board would just have five members. So it's quite a consolidation plan. Okay, so let's go to your agency, which is on page, uh, three. Uh, Eastern Agency would have one, two, three, four, five, six boards. Uh, so, and, uh, for number one, it combines Brett Springs Day School, Checheltra, and Wingate. With, uh, five board members, again, these are all five board members, anyway, yeah. One at large for Checheltra, Bahalen, uh, Tsetechi, Melito, Tseato. One each for Church Rock, Ayambato, one at large for Pine Dale, Mariano Lake, one at large for Smith Lake, Theru, Baca, and then Smith Lake chapters. Uh, Board number two would be covering, uh, Baca, uh, Gloyaje, uh, Lake Valley, Tseiei, Mariano Lake, uh, Debejajahatjin, Oho and Sino, Pueblo Pantado, Ado, Tisosbota. All those combined would be covered by one board, uh, with five members, representing Baca, Prue, one at large for Pine Dale, Mariano Lake, Smith Lake, Theru, one at large for Tseiei and Nahavishki, Lake Valley, White Rock, and Crown Point chapters. One at large with Consular, Oho and Sino, Pueblo Pantado, one at large with Vicente, Little Water, Casmera Lake, White Horse, White Horse, uh, Lake chapters. Number three, um, Eastern Navo Schools, uh, with, this one again, with five members, would involve, these are the four, 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 uh, Toriyon, uh, Zatlano Dili, Hanatlin, uh, Eiyei. Toriyon would have two members, Herfno would have two, Nagizi would have one. Um, Alamo, Rema, Toajale, notice, again, all left at five. So, uh, kind of a combined effect, like I mentioned, all the other, uh, four agencies, they all have two, only two boards each, uh, with five members on each board. So, uh, so currently, you have sixty-three, uh, boards, uh, with about two hundred and sixty-five board members in total. And board seats are only four and five, currently. Ado, Plan Number One is sixty-three boards, two hundred and forty-five total members, with board seats of three, four, five, six, and seven. A Plan Number One. Plan Number Two, Eiyei, that's where the combining starts to take effect. Total board members would be two hundred and twelve members, forty-three boards, with seats of four, five, six, and seven. Plan Three, uh, reduces total membership size to one ninety-two, forty-three boards, with only seats of four and five. Plan Four A, uh, shoots the numbers back up to two hundred and fifty-nine members, sixty-three boards, with seats of four and five. Plan Four B reduces that same grouping to one hundred and eighty-three board members, forty-one boards, seats of four and five. Uh, for Five A, a total membership, two thirty, two hundred and thirty members, sixty-three boards, with seats of three, four, and five. Ado, Five B drops the same to one hundred and sixty-seven members, forty-two boards, with seats of, uh, uh, three, four, and five. Number Six, total board members, seventy, with only fourteen boards and five, five seats, uh, per board. So, uh, so in terms of my presentation, again, going through these, uh, uh, then, uh, Ado, Eiyei. You can have a lot of time to make comments. So if you can, uh, when you speak, oh, yeah, uh, mention who you are, uh, mention the organization that you're representing, uh, which plan you prefer. Uh, you may say, I prefer Plans X and X, or whatever, but you may also say, definitely, I do not want Plan X and X, or whatever. Eh, the least favorable, you know, eh, uh, we, we need to, we need comments like that. Ado, on top of that, try and keep your comments to the reportionment subject, yeah. There, there are a lot of problems in Navo education, we know that. Uh, so, and then the time limit is.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah, I, I think, um, four, five minutes is probably good.
I mean, we, we, we understand everyone wants to talk, but we, we have a lot of people, and we want to make sure that we have everybody speak, and also be mindful of everyone else's time. Because I know everyone wants to speak, and we could probably be here all day, and, uh, I mean, the most important thing is, we want your comment, we want your feedback, and we ask that, as far as a public comment to be on the topic of apportionment, because this is what this is, about the upcoming school board elections. And to, also, these comments are being recorded, also a video, and they are considered public, right? So anything you say, uh, it's gonna be public, right? I mean, try to at least abide by the five, five minute time limit, because we, we do have a lot of people who, who want to speak.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Do you think, uh, the decisions would be based on the comments we make on the year, or on the public hearing?
I, I, I think that's kind of like a, I, if I could comment, yeah, just, just the process for itself, again, just, 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 we produce some of these plans to show to the public and all that. Ado, by tomorrow, for, for, for example, for my presentation, and presenting these, again, Ado, Eiyei. In terms of providing a summary of a report to the committee, uh, Hesi Committee, uh, Ado, Eiyei, you would, you would hope that they, they do take into consideration, uh, the comments, the recommendations that are made. Ado, we want to know when you come up to speak, uh, which plan you prefer. So, and again, uh, Ado, that committee itself, again, like most standing committees, I, I, so depending on how that goes, I, I don't know what will happen at that point, but, but they're the ultimate decision maker in terms of which plan to go with. Plan A, I, Eiyei, that's what they go forward with their legislation, so, uh, I think it's quite important that you do, uh, uh, provide your comments as to which plan that, uh, you would prefer, so.
First name is Martha Garcia.
Martha, Ms. Garcia?
No, just, I, I, I guess all we ask for is just her name, your chapter affiliation, and if you're with a school or, or organization.
Eh, sign in, she jacks, when you sign in, that's what she do. But in terms of, uh, please state your name, your organization, uh, plan preference, so, thank you.
Uh, Yat Ei, my name is Scott, this is Chico. Reportionment plan, when you have a lot of money, you don't have to pay. You can just have a house, although you have to pay for it. Uh, you know, you pay for the house, and then you can go to the hospital. You know, it's expensive, you know, it's expensive, and then you have to pay for it. Then you have to pay for it. So, uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. It's in the old alley, so you have to pay for it. You have to pay for it, you know. She, Yamarta Garcia, she, uh, Rayman Navu Chapter, uh, she is a patient of the house. Although, uh, Rayman Navu School Board Incorporated, uh, she is a school board member. Uh, but she, uh, June, uh, uh, she is a, uh, she has a, uh, she has a house. Uh, she has a house, and then, uh, in the, in the, uh, I see, you know, you're a student. And, uh, you can pay for it, you know, when you have a lot of money. Uh, large, large nation, uh, you can go to the hospital, you know, and then you have to pay for it. You know, you have to pay for it. Uh, she, uh, she can pay for it, and then you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You can just have a house. And, uh, large, uh, she, uh, she, uh, you know, you can pay for it, you know, you can pay for it. But, uh, uh, you know, uh, you, uh, uh, you know, uh, you have to pay for it. Uh, two arrows, uh, the, uh, you know, uh, you have to pay for it. You have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. And, uh, I see, you know, uh, you have to pay for it. Uh, you know, Rayman Navu School Board, uh, uh, you have to pay for it. You know, uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, you know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You know, when you have to pay for it, you can pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, Washington, you know, uh, BIA, uh, 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 in the Health Service. And it's expensive, you know, uh, you get, you know, uh, clinic, so, uh, uh, when you have to pay for it. You can pay for it, you know, social service, uh, 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 behavior health. And, uh, you can pay for it, uh, contracts, though, grants, uh, uh, you have to pay for it, you know. And, uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, you know, you have to pay for it, you know. You have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You know, you can pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You have to pay for it, you know. And, uh, you have to pay for it, you know. Rayman Navu School Board, uh, you can pay for it, uh, in the, uh, Albuquerque area. Uh, they go, uh, you know, you have to pay for it, Washington, you know. And, uh, uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. So, uh, 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 you know, you have to pay for it. You know, you have to pay for it. Uh, you know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. She, you have to pay for it, you know, she, you have to pay for it. Grants group, uh, based on, you know, you know, you know, you know. Uh, she, that's, uh, that's, you know, contract support costs, you know, you have to pay for it. You know, you have to pay for it, you know, Washington, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, Rayman Navu Chapter, yeah, you know, that's, you know, you have to pay for it. It's, uh, uh, one hundred percent on contract support costs, not at all, you know, you have to pay for it. You can pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. And, uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. And, uh, you have to, uh, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, Prime Minister, you know, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. You have to pay for it. And, uh, she, you have to pay for it, you know. Uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, you have to, uh, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know. You have to pay for it, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Garcia. Uh, through the process, uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, we, we learned quite a bit, just, uh, not to education. Uh, although, you have to, statistics, that's always, uh, uh, just, uh, since, uh, for, well, nineteen ninety seven, uh, uh, so, uh, uh, you have to pay for it. Reportionment, uh, uh, people call them, entities are involved with reportionment. Uh, you have to pay for it, you know, you have to pay for it. That's, uh, that's, uh, you know, you know, you have to pay for it. Uh, uh, you, you have to pay for it. Um, I was gonna make another point, but I, I'm not gonna go there, because I don't wanna waste time. Uh, who is that?
Norrie Kelly.
Well, while you speak, she, I'll, I'll think about what, 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 other comment I was gonna make. Uh, please come on up.
Good morning, Yat Ei. She, Yat Ei, Norrie Kelly, who is my retirement, my best friend. Turn around, don't rush. Wingate High School, uh, Wingate Elementary, uh, school board members, uh, called, uh, 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 the elderly have forgotten, unfortunately, clearly, what we, we find out about. I'm not sure why, and the education is pursuing downsizing. When we downsize, we're letting the federal government know that we're okay, we're not okay. Uh, that, now, let's talk, certain areas, by, you know, she, um, will enhance the purpose for school board members. Uh, she, yeah. Who's here, school board members, uh? Our number one priority as far as, um, uh, shortfalls is education, access to resources, access to food, and transportation, I'm now, uh, 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 Jason, you know, uh, called. Atila, one of the, uh, she, uh, can be born, uh, that, he is, uh, even, you know, uh, the never of time, or the, uh, the education, least I hear of it. Uh, called, Twin Arrows, how far is that from here? Uh, for me, uh, we would be able to, Twin Arrows. Uh, called, uh, and the agenda is limited to what the subject should be. Uh, called, even, you know, uh, Hesley is not here with us to really listen to us. And then we have somebody that was appointed to home care, and he reiterates that education is not something that he's, um, well, uh, knowledgeable of. Uh, uh, he has a different, uh, priority, he has something that lay in behind availability. Uh, called, do, uh, Yat Ei, uh, in, so, by, she says, uh, yes, that's true. But, actually, it off time. And then, they says, uh, many, it counts everyone, because, uh, they know that we need to ask those questions. The question, to me, uh, of where it's hard to, uh, so, the, uh, priorities back in, um, where we still have to build a fire, because we don't have, um, natural gas pipes into our areas. Uh, we don't have internet. Actually, I was in Santa Fe, uh, and one of the, um, young men made me cry, because he said, uh, every day, he's driving twenty-six miles, one way, to internet. Even, you know, uh, Yat Ei, I have three masters. Do, uh, he should pursue my, uh, doctoral, no, uh, the, uh, and I think I have to drive fifteen miles, one way, to get to, uh, access to internet. Uh, uh, fifty miles, yeah, not stop, he says, every day. And what's the price of gas out there, here? Uh, called, uh, you have to pay for it, oh. School board, uh, Yat Ei, you know, that, oh, you, that's what we're waiting for. Uh, you, uh, you know, uh, you know, June, uh, come visit us and see what we're doing. Even, you know, uh, Yat Ei, you know, I'm looking at my area, where we need high school and the elementary. It's so easy to, um, delegate, manually to come to me. It's only twenty miles, but I'll come one way. But, we do, aside from the elementary, uh, locally, in Hachin, we need elementary, the, uh, yes, we have the high school, too. And we all, I always say, back in twenty-twelve, that we were, um, the guinea pig to see how it came about to combine schools. Uh, called, it came up, and it's been for us. And we can say, we want our area, where our kids come to school, to be, uh, Wingate Elementary. And when we talk about, uh, Bahala, the grades, I believe, go up to sixth grade. And then we talk about, um, things with the high school. Uh, called, I want us to concentrate on our local schools, to enhance them, to be reading at their grade level. Uh, uh, I like for the, the education to hear that, and I'm, I'm sorry that we don't have the superintendent or the, the boss of that area to be here with us. I wish you would, or she would, not sure who that is, thank you so much.
Uh, next up is, uh, Mr. Charlie Long, senior, from the Root Chapter, Representative, uh, President.
Oh, Yat Ei, I'm talking to you, so, I have to, uh, I have to, you know, you have to pay for it. She, I'm going to, uh, you know, uh, I'm going to, uh, just, uh, you know, uh, uh, I'm going to, uh, you know, uh, I have to, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, she, I'm going to, Navajo Predator School, Ramon Ten. I start with that school in ninety-one. First, it was Mission School, way back in the early nineteen hundreds. Uh, you know, Navajo Academy. I have, I'm, you know, uh, I'm not, I'm, you know, uh, Peterson's, uh, Betty O'J. Do something. You can, you know, uh, you have to pay. Eight, uh, seven board members. One from education, one from the, the chairman, president's office. Uh, you know, five agency. Uh, I start, uh, yeah. Uh, called, I see, now, the, uh, it's, uh, I'm trying to, uh, try to, uh, you know, you know. Uh, called, it takes years and years to complete the dormitory, the school, the football field, the gymnasium, and all other physical activities, the school. Uh, called, I'm, you know, uh, it takes about twenty years. Uh, called, this, uh, I have to, uh, I have to, uh, I have no problem with the five, five-eight, four-eight, uh, double car at last. Lee, Chin Lee, in Western Agency, one represent. Uh, you know, four to five, it's one represent. Uh, you know, she, uh, represent, uh, come, when I'm tired, uh, uh, I'm, uh, uh, she, uh, uh, you know. She, you know, Eastern Agency. Uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, you know, uh, you know. Uh, called, banks, case, uh, uh, you, you know, the small school. Uh, you know, uh, you know. Were you comfortable with it?
No.
You have to pay for it. You know, uh, you know, all the students come from all agency. But the biggest one is Shipra, called Matthew, so, uh, you know, uh, you have to pay for it. Uh, you know, the next one is mine, Eastern Agency. Uh, you know, four to five, uh, combined, and Chin Lee, and Tuasili, I mean, yeah, Tuasili. Uh, you know, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, it's getting close to election. Uh, called, George, they, uh, she, John, uh, you know, uh, John, uh, you know, uh, at least we're gonna fix it today, today, the plan, you know. Uh, called, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, uh, called, it's, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, you know. Uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, it takes time. Uh, called, you know, uh, 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 uh, called, uh, yeah, uh, you know, 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 uh, uh, called, uh, school board. Akut sa'ha'ho', school board. Ve'ka', at'ei, ve'ke's. For example, du kui she' e, board member, a'ja'it'ha'. Akut sa'ha'ei, a'ya'adat'ei. A'ro Vansus'ke'sko, I think, they're after it. The money wise, base of. Halit a'ei, last'ha'da'oli, if you can buy, do an'alu Vansus'ke's. Akon deh, te'ka't. Now, we Navho Preparatory School, has it'han'i, every mahcha'ha'ne'ja. A'ado were the only one IB globally diploma. K'at'au'ha'det'ha. We worked for that four years, two years, I see in general, named Kethalane. There's only eight in New Mexico. The closest one is Kattenwood, in high school in Albuquerque. A'ado only, United States, du kui go'shi'ho'lo. IB, then ni'gi, we had to go round the, oh, a'ha'gi. Ha'deta. T'uts'ans'oe, di'ta'ku'et'et, es'ke'ka'na'ha'nan'ko. Naha'ni'ta'sh'ron, na'na'sh'na'ho'lo, le'sh'ha't'no. But, our student get a hundred percent scholarship. Matthew and I and the other board member, we, daily basis na'ha'lo. We hunt for that scholarship money. And we get, akon jern'ol'oh. Every person has to go to college, and they love it. The other day, we just met, was the parents. And they appreciate a lot of things. Akon she'dom, y'al'tha'gi, as a'na'le elementary do, eh'gr'j'ei'ide. You had to prepare for a scholarship. A'ado ni'sh'ha'ho'te. The cars, she'we, she'ya'ja, ha'ja'ni'ea. This is the very best one. Akon naha'na'sh'ke, the head of the school, kadi'yo'ho'sha. A'ro four to five, Navho Preparatory, do'ul'is'ka', is the school board. A'pas'da'au. Akut a'isi, they're up there. A'hot'a'ba'ansha'ke's, te'ka'hi'al'tha'gi, ye'vo'ta. Combine, nan'ha'gi, that beno'sh'ha'asht'ha', he'hi'ha't'eshi. But I'm sure, sa'ha'sh'inn, n'age'ha'dat'ei, o'sh'sh'ba'ka'ho'ho'do. Do'sh'ha'hi'ni'ka'ha'ho'do'sh'inn, he't'au'na'ho'ho'te. For example, un'ke, school board, on'ne'teha'ta, way back in early, early sixties. A'un'ke, four un'ke, do'ul'ha'ja'sh'ost'ha'ta, slav, na'sh'han'ach'ha. A'ja'high school, in the, wasn't ski, da'ye' in the. Du kui she' ha'sha, high school board, do, noh'hi'ti'no, a'tha'ha'nan'ash'ati'te. Akon a'ado va'tha'det, a'ro, the new high school, it'ea'ya. E, the new high school, na'ne, ni's'ha'ke'di'ya, then they got another new high school. Ita', do e'ha'ash'ip'zen'as'la. Charlie Long, le, she'ka'ra, she'ka'ra go'na't'at'ha, noh'hs'ach'ron connection. She'd, noh'kon'ash'ha't'at'ha, certified elders, na'li'ek'ol. Akon a'hot'a'ni, k'ha'ya'de. Akon, we love our children. They are the precious, they are care on. They hold up-to-date education through computers, e'ho'au'yu't, on'sh'sh'gen. They know how to operate, they know how to hear and dare. Ita'ha'ya, ta'dr'ad'ei, a school in the sun, deh. Tuk, 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 is'ha'ha'sha. She'old'te'its'han'ju'inda, resolution ha'ind'indi. He'ha'e, na', she'ena'ka'ya'n, na'sh'ha'sha, y'pa't'sh'chin'do, k'ya'and'sh'ch'ide, k'ya'and'sh'nal'ado. Do'ul'ni'sh'ha'sha, ni'da'ta, oh, e'na'and'li.
Yeah, Mr. Long. Notice that we're not very pressuring the people to, you know, to. We wanna leave it up to you, so I shall keep it as brief as you can. Uh, how kui she'ya, next?
Next up is Mr. Griffin Chavez.
Yeah, see, bene. I'm glad to see familiar faces, it's good. I was glad to see a Phil parking lot outside. Those school board members, a'ado, naha'alt'ha'ki do, bena't'ha'ya. It's good to see you. She'ish'ke, at'ei'ish'ke. Na, naha'pani'sh'la'na, k'ne, b'sh'sh'chin'dis'ja'ei. A'ado e, aschi'e, na'sh'na'ho'pani'sh'chi. Na'ya'sh'na'sh'ka', I sit on the Slav Deli Grand School Board, since two thousand nine. Akon e, a'jo't'as'han'ach'ha. He wa't'ha'tau, when he was under the BIE school, system'ya't'ha'tau, a'jo't'ha's'at'ana. Before all this, with all these rules got implemented. As'han'ani'de, ult'ha'vi'ni'ich'ih, t'ha'pin'ats'at'ha'at'au'ha'ni'te. Jor, kla'ei BIE operator, e'la'te BIE, at'ikidesi, i'do'ti'tama, i'ad'ye'epa'da'ini'sh. A'ro kla'ei grand school, e'as'ap'ap'ap'ap'ap'port'as'anal. A'ro l'lo' kla'ei contract school, it's na. Akon e bena'go'au', akon e school board, na'ha'no. Akut di'ku'epa'ya't'hi, k'uch'it'aid'au, Mr. Foster's Larry. Larry Rogers, we get, we just get those two Larry's mixed up, not just only by name, excuse me. Larry Rogers, e kodo'ul'na'number's in, naha'hi'genel. A'ne'ga'ra'ba'na'ho'ni'izan, t'at'li'na't'eli'sh. Been involved with chapter politics since nineteen seventy-seven. Akon l'asi, after that, he'd like, in the, not get his chin. So, probably in our sixties, he knew the, ni'ka. Akon di'de'gi, kodo'up'ya't'hi'ki'sh'na, kodo'sh'na, a'fellow school board members. E'de'gi'e, every ten years, the nen'alt'ha', e's'ins'as'at'no ba'na't'eh'ka. Akut a'was'ki'sh'et'ide, kodo'ul'reportments, l'au'hu'ne'na'ti. It's not that the friendly gesture of our councilman, i'do, e, it's not the reportment. It has to be done every ten years. Ten years ago, t'au'lu'ye'ba'sha'sli, l'asi'bed'as'li. A's'ab'ya'ho'li, juz'ho'inda, behes'ani l'ha'ho'li'la'ya'and'ik'ha'il'tau'au'ha'it'au. Beni na'go'au'ei'ek'innat'az'na, school board san'ali'gi, ek'ad'be'nat'ani'sh. Akon kon'om'arta, k'ars'ei'ya'hat'zi, le, twin arrows, w'al'ye'led'as'as'it'ni. A'ro nihi'k'ha'inde, a'ro wits'ani, has'ol'tha'ole school board members. A'ro ea'ata'ti'e, b'spanas'ha', a'ado former president, chairman, dan'led'at'aid'eh'da'ha'tau'tse, no. On'na'ha't'ha', it'sha'at'je'do, a'ro, nan'ao. Akon do'ani, el'k'uts'ha'la. Di'de'gi'e, le, be'el'ets'hi'ke'da'ha', em'li'ei'wa't'au'ka'la. Basically, we were dictated to. A'ri, di'at'au'ni'ish', di'at'ei, naha'a'de'lu'ne, nen'ha'hal'om. A'ri, a'ya't'au'ni'ach'ha'tau'ts'ash'ha'el'ei'ne, an'ur'h'si, e'dis reporter ba'huin't'om. Na, k'ir'k'ba'spanas'ha', a'ne, o'yu't, a'ha'ch'it'au'ha'zi. L'ha'ei'eng'el'ne, a'ro beni'na school board, deh, tan'ol'le. You're just, you're just let Joe blow off the street, you know. A'ro kla'ei'na't'ne. A's'ye'wa't'ha'ho', la'ki doctor degree, that it's os'ita'ei' school board, na'ad'ha'oli. Beni na'go', sa'as'ets'indas', after that, after that, e, do'ul'ei'ra. Do'ul'au'ha'na't'ak'idi'ei'ra. Akut di'ku'na ba'huin', k'ini'ke, a'ri, di'plan six, or the, I'm definitely opposed to that. Beni na'ni'ke, s'us'nap'bes'ets'no'ei, e'pa'ya'and'itsa. Akon di'la, doctor degree, a'ei'ya, a'ei'ya school board, dan'li'ol'el'ne'ne, e'ei'ya, a'che'gi'v'sa'ke'ho'ili'at'au'ha'ik'at'sits'ha. Akon k'ue'gi, ha'dela e'hi'le'ne, naha'and'ait'nel'od'at'jen'ila b'spanas'ha', a'ri. Who puts 'em there? You guys do. Akon ba'and'ei'ho'nel'od'at'ei, on'ich'li, on'ich'li, that it's a'ri'sh'na'ha. Akon e'ha'ri, di'ni'ro, e, di'plan six, e, e's'ins'no'ha'tzi, two of them. A'ro how many has'it' members? Akut di'hi'k'ue'gi, o'yu't, el'k'uts'ha', akus'ha', di'public hearing, ba'at'ilt'ish'la'ko'p'ho'au. He's here, isn't just a matter of exercise? Akon le'has', jor'at'ani, di'ilk'ik'ke. Beni na'go', as I chaired the, the Navho School Board Executive Board, ni'ke'di, no, e, I'da'ei tribal elevens'os. E'ke'ho', e'na'ma, chapters, eh. Akut ni'ke'di, no, e, from the votes, e, he's she, one of those plan, those plans that basically ties into existing tribal laws, e'di'ki'v'kes'izan'ni. Akon kodo'ul' Larry, no, it sound like Plan One, probably Plan Four, e. E'as'ho'lu'ni ad'ha'sh'la'adeh, so'ta'ini. Di'de'gi'e, a'jo'ko'e, that would be my head. Di'plan six, e, om'ri'sh'tr'ach'k'ans'ani'ar'vi'ha. Do'ul'ei'ra. Akon la'te'ni b'spanas', a'ne'h'si, no, e, there's gotta be a change, dan'ket'ne'kat'eno. Kodo'be'ilt'ha'ch'et'ne, ki'as'pan'kat'et'chi. A change every ten years doesn't mean you wipe out people. So, John Larry, please stay with reportment, ni'ni'gin'de. Did you know there's also a plan chapter for Sin'os'ni'gi? A'hot'a'kinat'ani'sh'. Resilization, e'di'ki'v'au', e, original, non'ki'v'au'ni'gi. L'ha'als' Sin'os'ni'ge, o'na'sh'ha'it'ho'ka. E'ad'ye' plan, even.